Twenty twenty-three Planning and Zoning Board Meeting, if everybody will please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as I said, we have a quorum. Is somebody patching Jay Scheckman in on the phone? Is he there? Okay, well, we'll continue on when he comes on, just let us know when he joins in case he wants to weigh in on some questions or what have you. Like I said, we do have a quorum. To my left, way down there, all by herself is Marilyn Mamano, who's in timeout. You want to come sit over here? You're welcome to come sit. And then to my right, I've got John Bronco, Mary Furtig, Patrick McTeague, and Sheri McCartney. And from the city, we have Jim Hetzel, that's representing us with the principal, as the Principal Planner, Principal Urban Planner, sorry, Sheri Wallen, Assistant City Attorney. And I saw Yvonne and Lorraine. Is there anyone else here from the city? How are you? And, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. And then also Leslie Harmon, who is our court reporter, Prototype Services or something. So, anyway, so we do have a quorum. Anyone who's wishing to speak tonight, please rise, raise your right hand and take the oath from Ms. Wallen.
If you're going to speak to the board tonight, can you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
All right. Before we get into case number one, is it the board's pleasure to make the staff report, staff findings on all of the items part of the vote in order to expedite things?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, we have a yes, and do we have a second?
Yes.
All right, we got two yesses. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes. Okay, item number one, let's start with disclosures. Marilyn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can you, did you approve the minutes?
No, well, we can if you want to. Okay. Would somebody like to approve the minutes from the June twenty-first, twenty twenty-three meeting?
Second.
Shari, you did, Patrick's second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, minutes passed. Okay, so Marilyn, any disclosures on item number one?
None.
Patrick?
I have none.
John?
None.
Sheri?
None.
Mary?
Visited the site.
Okay, and I had none. Please note that Mr. Gannon is joining us. Steve, we're getting ready to get into item number one. Do you have any disclosures?
No disclosures.
Okay.
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry. No. Correct.
So Barbara's still not here, right? So I don't know whether we want to, now that I think of it, I don't know, we want to start with item number one, and I've seen that Ms. Toothacre's here. Why don't we table agenda item number one until Barbara gets here?
Well, we're, the city's the applicant on this.
Okay.
It's rezoning in the uptown area.
So is she not coming to present?
No, the team is here, but it's going to be.
Oh, okay, all right, I'm sorry. You don't look like Barbara. All right, go ahead then.
Good evening, board members. Michael Ferrer, Urban Planner, case planner for this item. The item that you have before you is part of an incentive program that was created for the uptown area where the city processes the rezoning applications on behalf of the applicant or the property owner. This request specific, this request specifically is to rezone eight hundred and four thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven square feet, eighteen point forty-six acres of land located at six zero, six seven zero zero and six seven five zero North Andrews Avenue from Heavy Commercial Light Industrial Business B three District to Uptown Urban Village Northeast District, UUV dash NE. There is a site plan that has been submitted for this. It's still under review at the moment. Here, if you have any questions, and we have the property owners here as well.
Any questions of the city?
Yes, could you pull up the?
My phone.
Could you pull up the description of the boundaries of the rezoning proposal, please? Are we rezoning, are we proposing to rezone just this property? Or are we extending an existing zone that's adjacent to it?
It's just, it's just the property. It's, so we're not, it's extending it. The property to the east is Oakland Park.
Oh, obviously.
Yeah.
Oh, going far, great. So this is just for this property?
Correct.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I noticed that the existing use has a, includes a preserve. Is that correct? Is it, go ahead.
For, for this property?
I thought I saw the existing use as office and preserve.
It's vacant.
But it's vacant, and it's not really a preserve. It's just undeveloped natural land there or something?
I'm not sure where, where it says.
Sheri, I can jump in if necessary. I'm up for my, this does contain a wetland area, a preserve area that is on the county's environmental sensitive land, which is being monitored by the property owner. What has happened is the area has declined significantly in its need to preserve, so they're going to mitigate. They're going to, they've already been to the county, I believe, several times to have a mitigation plan approved. And they'll be developing probably about half of it. The other half, they'll be preserving.
And that's in the site plan?
The site plan, just a correction, site plan has not been submitted yet. It's coming in, but we've been meeting with the applicant, looking at a potential site plan in relation to the wetland and what area the county's going to allow them to mitigate for.
In circum-
So, so the zoning change that we do will still, everything, I'm sorry, the preserve, no. Building on the preserve will be monitored by the county, not us. It's not our thing to do.
Correct.
And those rezoning, are we rezoning that preserve as well? And, I mean, that area under the preserve?
Yes.
And it won't upset anything? The county will have a final say as to what happened with it.
Yes, this is strictly the rezoning of the property. They could, right now, it's, it's not preserved, rezoned, it's not zoned for open space or preservation land use or anything. Next, it was private property that was, had a preserve ordinance on it through the plat, you know, is dedicated for that, and that monitoring would be monitored by the property owner. And it's declined so significantly, and a portion of it, that's how they're able to mitigate for it. But this rezoning will include that preserved land, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one follow-up, and you touched on it a little bit there, on the plat, are they going to come in for a replat? Or a plat amendment, sorry?
They have to do a plat note amendment. I believe it's noted on the plat that that area would be preserved, plus they're going to be adding a use that was not on the plat before. So they'll have to submit a plat note amendment at that time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Is there anybody, is there a member of the community that would like to speak on this item? Hearing none, we'll close the public portion of it, bring it back to the board for further discussion or a vote.
Just one more question.
Yes, sir.
Why is the city the applicant, or why is the city representing the applicant here?
It's, it's because it's an incentive program in the uptown area. So part, what, part of the incentive is that the city will process the rezoning, so it'll be done quicker and cheaper.
All right. Well, we better hurry up.
Any other questions? Somebody like to make a motion?
Motion to approve with conditions of staff in the report?
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Please call the rule.
We're giving the second to Mrs. Mamano.
I'm sorry, Marilyn did.
Mr. Bronco?
Yes.
Ms. Furtig?
Yes.
Miss, Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamano?
Yes.
Sheri Weymouth?
Yes, and for the record, that item, that case number was UDP Z two three zero zero one. Sorry about that. Okay, passes unanimously. Case number two, case number UDP DRI two three zero zero one. We'll start with disclosures. Mr. Gannon?
Spoke with applicant's attorney, and, let's see, and that's it.
Ms. Mamano?
I spoke with the applicant's attorney.
Patrick?
I also spoke with the applicant's attorney.
John?
I spoke with the applicant's attorney.
Shari?
None.
Mary?
Sorry, I spoke with Ms. Toothacre and visited the site.
And I have none, so, good evening. First of four. You'll set the pace.
Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Board. Stephanie Toothacre, on behalf of the North Broward Hospital District. I would ask if you could hear items, and I think I'm going to defer to Shari, but I think it's appropriate for items two and three to be heard together. They're connected.
That's fine, as long as we do separate motions and public comment reflects the different items.
I'm sorry, what are we doing, Shari?
Stephanie requested that the items be heard together.
Right.
And so I just wanted to make sure that whoever comes up to speak clarifies which item they're speaking on, and we do separate motions.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you so much. I was looking for a clicker, but I've got a clicker back here. Again, Stephanie Toothacre, on behalf of the North Broward Hospital District, known as Broward Health. This is, there are two items that are before you. One is an amendment, it's, this is a, this property is in the middle of what's known as the Spectrum DRI. So we are asking for amendments to the DRI to accommodate this use, which I'll talk about in a moment. And the second is the, is the site plan and conditional use that goes along with that. So this is the property that is in the middle of Spectrum DRI, and I know that you're very familiar with this. It's in the airport district. You can see, obviously, FXC Airport is, is just to the north of it on the screen. This is the existing Broward Health offices. So this is an existing building. This is an interior build-out. This is not a new build project. It's just, it's just they're changing the use from office to, to essentially what's, it's known as PACE, which is an adult daycare. We are talking about here about Track G, which is already there, as you can see. The Spectrum Business DRI is about sixty acres, and this, next slide, thank you. And this is the site that we're talking about here. So it's an existing office use, and some, there are offices that are remaining, but we are, we are asking to convert a portion of those offices. Next slide. The land use is employment center. The zoning is AIP. Next slide. And Broward Health is proposing a partial interior renovation and remodeling of the existing one-story office building to convert fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-one, three hundred and sixty-one square feet of existing office to senior citizen use to operate the Broward PACE program. It's an all-inclusive care for the elderly. It is not a sleepover facility. The elderly come, they get dropped off in the morning, they have services and activities, and then they go back home in the evening. So there's not, there's no real traffic impact. It does operate under ACA, under the State's Agency for Healthcare Administration, and, and it does meet the city's definition of a senior citizen center. It doesn't include, as I said, nursing homes or SSRF. Next slide. So this is just, there we go. So one of the, one of the issues that's before you this evening is that the, that the PACE program doesn't fit squarely into the AIP zoning district, but there's a provision in the AIP zoning district that says the Planning and Zoning Board can grant a use that is similar or appropriate. that is similar or appropriate for the AIP zoning district. So that's, that's essentially what we're asking. It says, per ordinance number C2219, permitted conditional or accessory uses which are not specifically listed or are not substant, or are not substantially similar to those that are listed may be permitted if approved by the Planning and Zoning Board. And so, so we believe that this use is, is consistent with, with other uses that are listed in the AIP zoning district, and we're asking you to make that determination. So next slide. And here is the use, office service or business, which this obviously is, it's a, it's a service use. Next slide. So, we did appear before the Airport Advisory Board and got a, a recommendation of approval from, from that board. And the staff recommendations, the staff recommends the change in use application from office to senior citizen center use and to be forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Board. Public, next slide, Public Works determined that it has little to no impact on public services, and obviously it's adequately parked because there's no additional cars that come in. So, next slide. So as it relates to the DRI specifically, a couple of changes have happened in the Florida statutes. Originally, when this DRI was approved, it required that all of the, any changes to the DRI had to go through a full process to Planning and Zoning Board and City Commission. The statute has changed, that's no longer required, so one of the things that we're asking tonight is if we could propose cleanup language that says any changes to the DRI must be consistent with Florida statutes. We are also asking to change the name of the agent, the agent, the prior agent of the DRI is no longer practicing law, and they have a new agent, which is not me, but, but ask to change to their attorney. We are also asking for a conversion of 15,361 square feet of office use to senior citizen center use on Track G, but also reserving the right for the property owner to convert the senior citizen center back if they ever cease to use it as a senior citizen center. And finally, we're asking to delete a provision, an old provision that appeared in the 1984 DRI that related to bus shelters. From what I understand from the manager of the DRI, that was a, it was a requirement that they tried to, they tried to comply with, the city and the county, and they actually purchased bus shelters, the city and the county could not agree on the location of those shelters, they never got installed, and somewhere along the line, the county and the city said that we, that we don't need them. So we're asking to just clean up that language and take it out of the DRI itself. Next slide. So this is the language that we are, here, Robert is the, Robert Lockery is the agent for Spectrum DRI, so we're asking to change it from Don Hall to Robert Lockery, and this is the other language that we worked very closely with Shari on, on this language that basically refers to the senior citizen center, but refers back to code if a change is ever made. So we're just asking for those changes in the DRI itself. Next slide. And here, we're just asking to delete the provision of bus shelters. And, next slide. And here, we're just deleting all the language that refers to the original DRI was, when it was passed, was in conformance with the statute at that time, and we're just asking to clean that up and make it consistent with the statutes as they are today. And that is, that is, as it relates to the DRI, that, and the site plan, that, that's our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions and appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Jim, before we ask questions of Ms. Toothacre, do you want to do the, the staff corrections to get them on the record?
Yes, I believe, Yvonne, there's a correction to the case UDP A23006, I believe.
Members of the Board, Yvonne Redding, Urban Design and Planning, I'd like to correct the applicable ULDR section that is applicable here is 47-14.11, not 47-24.11, so that is a typo on my part. And I'd also like to make it known that the admin approval of the use change is not effective until the DRI, DRI amendment is approved.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just for the record, can you go back, the ULDR instead of 47-24-10 is...
It's 47, it should be 47-14.11.
Okay. Then, second of this, I'm sorry, of this application, which page was it that you were referring to?
It's not in the, it's not in the staff report, I just wanted to make it known.
That's going to be in the resolution, and just to clarify, the case number that you're referring to, Yvonne, is UDP, I'll let you say it, go ahead. Okay, and, and I think...
It's item number three.
Okay. Lorraine, I think you have a correction too with the Exhibit 4, do you want to state that on the record that we revised it today?
For the amendment to the DRI Development Order...
Can you state the case number?
Yes, it's UDP DRI, I'm sorry, I don't remember the number.
230, 23001.
23001. Exhibit 4 is being updated according to the slide that was presented to you this evening by the applicant.
One more time, which slide?
That subsection E, right? And it's the language, did you want to read it, or?
I can read it.
Yeah, I think that's best.
So subsection, this section of the Development Order will read that the property consists of 60.05 acres plus minus, the uses which are approved for and which may be constructed on the property are 1,109,960 square feet of office uses, a 261,000-square-foot garage, and light manufacturing and high-technology research uses. There may be developed in lieu of 125,000 square feet of office facilities, which are located adjacent to West Commercial Boulevard between Northwest 15th Avenue and Northwest 17th Way. In the area of the property approved for office-related uses, a hotel and freestanding-quality sit-down restaurant. The hotel may consist of 175 rooms in lieu of 89,000 square feet of office space and a freestanding-quality sit-down restaurant with a maximum gross floor area of 10,000 square feet in lieu of 36,000 square feet of office space. Additionally, on Track G of the property, up to 15,361 square feet of office use may be converted to a senior citizen center use as defined by the City of Fort Lauderdale's Unified Land Development Regulations, Section 47-18.30, effective at the time of the site plan application. The owner of Track G reserves the right to convert the senior citizen center use back to office use in the future, subject to the requirements of the city's Unified Land Development Regulations, Code of Ordinances, and all other requirements in this Development Order. The exact size of the buildings, their exact utilization, and their location on the property will be determined at site plan approval.
Just so I understand, that's not in the staff report, correct?
No, we'll need to switch out Exhibit 4.
Which I don't have. Just making sure it's...
Yes, so we'll, we will give you the new version with this exact language.
Just from my understanding, you're making a change to Exhibit 4?
Yes, correct.
That's the exhibit you're changing?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I need to go back to the other case, I apologize. Under the UDP-A23006, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Yvonne, can you tell me, besides the change to the UDL, ULDR section, what was the second change that you were making?
So I'm going to defer to Shari Wallen about the timing of this amendment.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I'm waiting on the city attorney to respond to me, because my understanding is it's supposed to be effective on the date of the, that the ordinance is adopted, but I'll find out, and, you know, maybe we could do a recall or something.
If I could, Chair, I, I just need to, Yvonne said one thing on the record that's not accurate, and actually, this is, the PACE program is a program that is funded by state funds, and the building, the, the interior build-out is actually already done, we've been working very closely with the city, so it's done, we just can't use it yet because we needed to come and get this approval this evening. In, in conjunction with the, the manager's office and, and other, other senior employees of the city, we, we basically said if we do not start using the PACE program tomorrow, we would lose the state funds. So we worked out an agreement whereby we could start using it and send the, the DRI amendment language to the City Commission after their summer break as a cleanup item, but that would not prevent Broward Health from starting to use the facility. That's a little different than what Yvonne said on the record, and I just wanted to make that clear, that that was our understanding, that, that it could be used upon this approval, and that the DRI language would still need to go to the commission to be cleaned up.
Ms. Wallen, do you agree with that?
I don't have any knowledge of that. I would have to get the city attorney to approve that, because I wasn't directed to do that, but I, I, I'm just waiting on him to get back to me, so if...
So how do we resolve this?
Could we possibly just table it and do a, call it towards the end, or, in a little bit, just so I could speak with him?
So you're expecting to hear something from the city attorney imminently?
Yes, it shows that he read my...
So, so that item was, was for the UDP-A23006, or for the, the, the DRI?
Well, technically, only the DRI language has to go forward to the commission, which it will never have to again, once we clean this up.
I'm going to defer both items.
Okay.
Okay, so let's hold off the questions and come back to it.
Could we ask a question?
I know, I know both you and Marilyn have questions.
I also have a comment. Is it possible to work, and make something, and these big...
I'm sorry, is it possible to get the changes that are being read into the record handed to us? I, I think most of us have read all of this before we come, and it just would be good to see it in writing, so, I, I just, just to, just a handout to insert into our packet.
Yes, if, if staff can do it, that would be good, yeah. So I know it was up on Stephanie's PowerPoint, but I understand, so we'll try to print it beforehand and bring it going forward.
Thank you.
Chair, since we are going to table it, and we are, happen to be in our building where we work, I think staff can produce it rather quickly and come back to the item, we can have it at that time.
So before I table this, is your question related to what was just read into the record?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so then let's, let's table the questions until we hear back from the, the city attorney.
Yeah, but I'll forget it by then, can I re-ask the question? It's a very fast question. When you said the, when you spoke the amendments to the, to the exhibit, you mentioned a lot of square footages and a lot of uses. Are any changes being made to them, or are they the same uses that were in the document previously?
The other intensities remain the same in terms of the office and research.
That's all I, that's fine.
John, you might as well ask your question.
Yeah, I have mine.
This is a question for you, as far as the delay. As far as us making our decision tonight, it seems like if we pass this through, there's still a process, there's still discussions beyond the purview of this board, whether we say yea or nay, so I don't know why delaying this would help us make a decision.
We're just, we're just postponed to the latter part of the, of the meeting.
Okay.
You know, depending on how long our next presentation...
I'm okay with it, I'm just curious.
So we're just buying time in hopes that the, that the attorney responds.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's about the resolution approving, it's a site plan level three, so it stops at this board, so the issue is that by virtue of approving the change of use, there's another process through the DRI, which is the other case number, that it has to go to the City Commission, but I think the request is that they be able to proceed even though the DRI hasn't been amended to approve the use, so that's the, the ask. So I'm just trying to...
Well, we don't have the authority to do that, the city attorney does, that's my point. I just, I don't see why that would affect our vote up here tonight.
Oh, no, I, I'm saying that as it pertains to the directive of there being a, a deal or whatever reached, I, I don't know anything about that, so I'm just trying to get clarity on that, so. I mean, the resolution says that it's effective on the date that the ordinance is approved by the City Commission in order for them to travel together, since both of these are required, but I, but if there's something else that I don't know about, I'd like to find out, just to make sure.
Mary?
Yes, thank you, sorry. On page, on Exhibit 6, page 4 of 7, there is, they are asking for you to have long-term bicycle parking for this project. Will anybody be arriving at your senior center on a bicycle?
No, never.
Three-wheeler. Tricycle, not bicycle.
I, I did drive out there today, and I think this is a great project, and I just think this is something that someone put in here as a formula that doesn't really belong in here, so I just wanted to ask you about it.
Right next to the bus bench.
We would ask not to have to do bicycle parking for seniors that are arriving on a shuttle.
All right, so I'm going to keep inching this ball towards the goal line, since we've heard from the applicant, we've heard from the city. And are there any other questions for either Ms. Toothacre or either of the planners?
Hearing none, I'm going to open it up to public... You want to make a motion to defer to later?
No, 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 I, I want to get the public portion out of the way. Is there anybody here from the public that wants to speak on either one of these items? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public portion of it. I suggest at this time that we let Ms. Toothacre present her next case, just to buy a little bit of time. You're, you're looking like you want to say something.
I have, I have an answer from the city attorney to make it effective on the ordinance date.
Hold on that motion. Go ahead, Shari.
The answer is from the city attorney, that it should be effective on the date of the ordinance.
So that's, you're saying when it goes to City Commission?
Yes, when the other item goes to City Commission, then the, the resolution for the site plan level three...
Then we can close up shop, because we'll lose our state funding. We, we had met with the city, the city manager, we've met with the district commissioner, that, that was the main issue.
Usually, we would be aware of it in a point, you're at a Planning and Zoning Board hearing, that we would have documentation that says to do that, so, but we have nothing from staff level or city attorney's office, so it's difficult for us to inform the board what we are, you know, what you're stating, because we have no documentation.
I would ask that the, maybe the Planning and Zoning Board could approve the item subject to us working with the city attorney's office after the fact, but before City Commission, because it, it does create a problem for the state funding.
And I make that motion. Because you closed the public hearing, right?
Before we make, before we make motions, let's close out, if there's anybody else who wishes to speak, Marilyn, I see your microphone on.
Yeah, I, I concur with John Bronco over there. I, I don't think it matters to us. What arrangements, the city manager, the city attorney, the applicant, the state, the funding, it doesn't matter to us. All that's before us is the site plan and the changes to the DRI. Let's do it, let them work it out.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any other comments? John, if you want to make a motion, we're going to handle these one at a time. I will remind you that actually the second case is the one that has the staff correction, so let's start with the first case, UDP DRI 23001, if you would like to make a motion.
I think Patrick should make it.
Motion to approve with staff conditions.
And with the recommendation of Ms. Toothacre of...
Uh, so, are...
That any changes to the, to the DRI be consistent with state statute, no bus shelter, and no, and no bicycle rack?
Just to jump in there, the, the reason why that was added is because you're not talking about just seniors coming to the facility, you also have employees, employees that could use those facilities, use the bus, bike to work, so it wasn't driven from staff saying, we expect senior citizens are biking, we expect that they could have staff members that would need those services, so that's why it's in there.
Just to clarify, are you approving the changes made by Lorraine, and this is the first one, which is UDP DRI 23001? Okay.
So, so that I'm correct on this, what you gave me, I didn't see corrections to the DRI case.
So, what was read into the record by Lorraine, we wanted to adopt that, but we haven't gotten to the site plan yet, so I'll read the resolution at that time and just let you know what it says.
So, we have a motion, and we have, do we have a second? I know we have a motion.
Second.
Point of order, what, what is the motion?
To approve with the staff comments and the corrections.
3001, right?
Yes, DRI, yes. Item, item number 2, case UDP DRI 23001.
And does that include the provision that any changes to the DRI... And does that include the provision that any changes to the DRI be consistent with state statute, adding that language? We could just call that out, because I think that's a really important point, and also clarify the bus shelter and the bike rack.
And Stephanie, that was the item that you want to have the City Attorney address before the City Commission meeting in August, correct?
No, I think it's a site plan. The timing of the, we were asking for the approval this evening, and that we had agreed to go to City Commission with the cleanup of the DRI language to make it consistent with state statute.
We're voting on two cases, so I'm trying to figure, does that apply to both?
The first case?
No.
That applies to the first case, so I want to make sure that that's on the record.
Yes, the DRI.
No, the DRI itself, it's required to go to the City Commission per the terms of the development order that's in an ordinance. So, that's the one you're voting on right now, so it's supposed to go to the City Commission. I think the issue is the site plan one, which is the next item that we can talk about, that I'll read the resolution for you. But this one, it's mandated in the order itself, the ordinance, that it has to go to Commission. So, this is a recommendation.
But I think as part of our motion, we need to ask the Commission, this is the DRI, it's item number two, it says DRI right on it, 23001, that we are requesting...
Recording in progress.
...any changes, along with our approval, that any changes to the DRI be consistent with state statute. This seems to me like something that needs to be cleaned up, and this is our time to say that. And I also think we call out the bus shelter and the bike rack.
Can I make a comment, Mr. Chair? I'm not clear that that is in our purview. I mean, I have no objection to it whatsoever to cleaning it up and having it comport with statute. It makes perfect sense to me. But is that, Sherry, is that in our purview to do?
So, the issue is that if you look at, well, you don't have your computers, great, okay.
Can we, the Commission, have to do that?
All right, so, in Exhibit 4 that you have there, what the request is, is that on Page 2, in Exhibit 4, it actually has a whole bunch of requirements to change the development order, and some of the citations are to a 1987 statute that I really had to search for. And so, what they're saying here is the request of the applicant is to remove all of that with the reference to the 1987 statute, and then have the proposed changes and requirements to the DRI be reviewed in accordance with the current statute, which is 2022, and it's Florida Statute 380.06, subsection 7. So, that's what's in the proposed changes. This was not changed today at all, this was already, you know, what you received in your backup. So, that's, just to clarify, that's what the ask is, is that it's to stop referencing the 1987 statute that we really shouldn't be looking at now, so...
And I might add, and what Sherry said is correct, I might add that if we were using the current statute, we wouldn't have to take the DRI through this process, because the statute no longer requires that.
Okay.
I guess my question was, not what we're doing, but whether we have the authority to do it. We're basically changing the ordinance, are we not? And is that in our purview?
No, this is a recommendation from you. The ordinance has to go to the City Commission to be changed, so that you're in the recommending body for this.
And that is still within our realm to do. You make that recommendation of changing an ordinance.
Yes, it's supposed to go to Planning and Zoning Board first, and then to the City Commission. A question? In relationship to case number two, that's the DRI, the bus stops and the bike racks, are they in the DRI, or are they in the site plan, or are they in both?
The bus stop is in the DRI, the bike racks are not.
So, the elimination of the, if we vote yes on 001, we're voting to approve the elimination of the bus stops.
Of the language related to bus stops, yes.
But not the bikes.
But the recommendation is on page...
Right.
Of number two, it's on Page, what'd I say, 4 of 7 of Exhibit 6, so it is in number two.
In number two?
It's, yeah, it's under the stamp.
Yeah, but wait, she just said it's in number one.
I meant number one. It's in the one that we're on right now.
Fine, I just want to be clear on that. I have no objection to removal of the bus stops, because the county's in charge of bus stops, okay? But the bike racks, I want to have a discussion about. So, I'm saving that for number two. Thank you.
But it's in number one.
Just for clarification.
She just told me the racks, the racks, not the bus stops. Okay, Lorraine, if you could just clarify, and possibly if we could get it on the screen, where the bus stops, where all of this is, so that we know exactly what changes are being recommended, if they vote to approve or not. So, could we possibly get that exhibit on the screen? It's in the backup?
Yes, so...
IT, could you possibly help us to just go to the backup of item number two? No, number one, we're on number one.
Case number two.
No, it's item two of the agenda.
The DRI 23001.
So, if you just give us a moment, we'll pull it up, so that everyone can see it at the same time, so...
In the meantime, Mr. Chair, I'd like to clarify that the development order, the existing development order, does require provision of onsite bicycle facilities to encourage the use of alternate modes of transportation. So, with the change of use, because really, the application came in as interior improvements, we added to implement the DRI development order, we added the condition that they would include a bike rack. This would be just a rack outside the building that would be available for whoever needs to use it to lock up their bicycle.
And it was part of the original DRI?
Yes.
Oh, okay, then I'll take my thing away. I mean, it looked like a new recommendation, the way it was on here.
I think it's so funny that we finally, they get another bite at the apple, and what's triggering it is a senior daycare facility, and they've got a million square feet of office, and nobody ever thought to put in a bus shelter or a bike rack. But here, we're going to pin it on a senior, you know, daycare. I think that's hysterical. But hey, it's our chance, it's another bite at the apple, right?
Well, why do we take another, why do we want to take another bite at the apple? The original bite had the bus stops and the bike racks.
Yeah, but now they're making the approval of this modification contingent on this thing.
Well, that's the issue.
It's kind of odd.
That's the issue. I mean, I understand the bus, the bus stops, they have no control over the bus stops. But if the original DRI was trying to encourage the use of transit or multimodal, why would we eliminate the requirement for the bike racks?
I brought it up, I'll tell you why I brought it up, because it's just in context of the senior center, and the senior center, the people are not going to be riding their bikes there.
Yeah, but everybody else is.
But if it's already in the DRI, and the City has chosen not to enforce it for 36 years, I'm perfectly fine leaving it in the DRI. I just thought, in context of, I'm like, John, if this one project is like a joke...
And it's a $500 bike rack, truth be told.
Right, so just leave it.
A bus shelter is something totally different.
Just leave it in the DRI. Someday, maybe they'll enforce it, and there'll be a bike rack.
And I will do that. I thought it was something new, and I thought it was a ridiculous new condition. All right, but I still, I still would go by my second, as long as we're including the language unchanging, unchanging, any changes to the DRI be consistent with state statute, and no bus shelter.
Okay, so, Lorraine, are we, because the only request that I have in front of me, like on paper, is the issue with changing the applicable statute, and then, of course, you know, the language that was in yellow pertaining to the, you know, the change of use. So, the bus issue is something that we should really talk about, and I'd like you to just show us where that is on the screen.
Sure, can we go to the next page?
Can we make that a little bigger?
Sorry. Yeah, right at the top, provision of bus shelters has been struck in the proposed amendments.
So, can you just say what page that is, so that we could just get it on the record?
That's Page 2 of Exhibit 4.
And what subsection is that in the actual ordinance?
Section 5.
What, like, the letter?
B.
Okay. So, can you just read it, so that the board knows what it is? Because I don't think everyone can see.
So, with the proposed change, B, in small caps, encourage transit use by development of turnout lanes, or provision of other amenities to increase ridership and provide transit route and schedule information as available in convenient locations throughout the project.
So, that's how it would now read? So, the section that's struck, can you just read that, though, so that they know, just tell them what's being struck from there?
The section to be struck is provision of bus shelters.
So, it used to say encourage transit use by provision of bus shelters, and that part, provision of bus shelters, is being removed? So, the question is, are you okay with that?
That's part of the motion, right?
Yes, just making sure, yeah. Okay.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you read the section again that you, that you gleaned that this is from?
This is from Section 5.
Exhibit...
Section 5A1B.
Page 2.
Page 2 of Exhibit 4.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
I'm sorry, can we clarify the motion, motion to recommend the case with staff corrections to Exhibit 4? Were there other...
So, it would be a motion to recommend approval of the ordinance, the amendment to the ordinance for the DRI, and then with staff corrections, as well as the removal of the bus shelter, all the corrections that were read, changes that were read on the record, and the state statute as well.
And that includes the change to the state, yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Toothacre, are you good with that?
Yes, thank you, as long as we can try to work out the issue of timing with the City Attorney's Office after. Thank you.
So, are you clear what it is now?
I'm not exactly clear, but I won't hold the meeting up, I will reference the video.
We're recording it.
Thank you.
Ad nauseam. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes. And just want to, for the record, this is for case number UDP DR, is it I?
DRI 23001.
DRI 23001, okay, just for the record. Mr. Baranco.
Yes.
There you go. It's green. When that, there you go.
We want it red there.
No.
Win red!
Yes.
Green or red? Ms. Forte?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamano?
Yes.
Chair, Waymouth?
Yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to case number UDP A23006. Is there any further discussion on that item?
Could we clarify what the changes are? This is the approval of the site plan, and in the approval of the site plan, are we also recommending the removal of the bus racks, bike racks? The planner's going up to speak about the item.
Microphone, please.
On the site plan, there is no reference to the bike racks or bus stations, this was just an interior change, and we determined there was no other site plan changes on the exterior.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
So, just to clarify, there is a resolution that's drafted for this one, since it's a site plan level three, and in the resolution, per my understanding of, you know, how the DRI works, is I have in here that it's effective on the date that the ordinance is approved by the City Commission to have it consistent with a change of use approval. So, that's what's in the resolution, and I've been advised to do that by the City Attorney, so...
Could I ask a question? Because I don't, I think we could add language in there, so that if they work this out, it's not something that has to wait. So, I would say that we, I'm happy to make a motion, Mr. Waymouth.
Let's see what moves.
And add this language to it, and it would be consistent with your site level three. Motion here that you have?
Let's see what Ms. Toothacre has to say before we make motions.
I would just request that we strike the language from the resolution, so that we have the opportunity to work with city staff between now, because otherwise, the DRI has to go for two readings, and that's not going to be until September. So, we would just ask that you approve it without the language making it subject to the DRI, and we will continue to work with staff in the interim.
Just for clarity, just so the board knows and understands that you're approving a use that is not permitted by the DRI. So, that's the problem, that's why we've been directed, and why the DRI has to take effect in order for the site plan, because it's not a permitted use. So, you may make that recommendation tonight, but there could be issues with legal matters. If we, if there's something that we are unaware of, then we can definitely do it.
Would the Commission not then have the opportunity to deny it, when it appears before them?
The problem is, is that if you do that, which is remove that language about the effective date, then essentially, you're approving a development permit today that is in direct conflict with an ordinance that was passed by the City Commission. So, I don't recommend it, I don't want them to lose their funding, it's nothing personal, it's just from a legal standpoint, I can't advise you to do that.
I've got a question.
Yeah, you go first, I go.
This is related to the existing zoning, the AIP. Don't we, as a board, have the authority to approve a similar use?
Well, the problem with this situation is that there is another factor, which is the DRI, which is passed by an ordinance of the City Commission, and in the listed uses, this particular use is not listed in that ordinance. And the only way to get that approved is by virtue of going to the City Commission and having them amend that ordinance to approve that use. This is an additional requirement that's just in our current code, but I can't advise you to conflict with an ordinance that was passed by the City that, you know...
But we already voted on that part.
But that's a recommendation, so that has to go to the City Commission.
So, that recommendation's going to the City. We already voted on that. Now, we're voting on a change of use.
The site plan level three, which is normally...
So, can we just approve that based on what the code tells us we can do? It says in the AIP, we have the authority to approve a use that is similar to the uses that aren't directly named in the AIP, but we have that authority, don't we?
Yes, but you also have to abide by the code of ordinances that are passed by the City.
But how are these not two different things? We pass the DRI, and that's going to follow your process. We pass the site plan, as we're being asked to do, and if there's a problem with any part of it that has to be the DRI, you're going to settle that later. But, I mean, this is just a narrow site plan question. I don't understand why we can't pass a motion, doing the site plan, and you resolve the other issues later, which is what you've got.
It's not narrow, because the code of ordinances, you have to abide by that, and this is actually a development order that you're approving today, but it's in direct conflict of the law of the City of Fort Lauderdale. The law is on the books of the ordinance, and that says that this is not a permitted use. So, my recommendation that is in the resolution is that it's effective on the same day that the ordinance is effective, amending it to approve that permitted use, and that way, it's consistent, and you don't have two different bodies operating differently.
I just would say...
May I just...
Yes, of course.
We're finished.
Okay. I was just going to say, if we have to wait until September to use the use, we're just going to have to withdraw the application.
Okay, but originally, when you came here tonight, your expectation was that we would pass item number two, and we would pass item number three, and you would go and you would work out whatever you had to work out to get the use of the site, so that you can get your grant.
They would travel together.
That they would travel together, but understanding, of course, that the first one isn't effective until the Commission votes on it, and you've had discussions with the city staff on how you could get around that issue. I suggest that we are making your life more miserable by trying to insert ourselves into this with a language that is conflicting with the State, with the City's ordinances. Do it the way you planned on doing it, go forth and be happy. We're making their lives more difficult by trying to be accommodating, and I appreciate that, and I want to be accommodating, but I think that we just make their lives more difficult by trying to add language to a site plan approval that is trying to circumvent the requirement that the DRI has to be approved. Let's just do it the way it was originally proposed, and let them work it out.
That's not, if I might, Ms. Maman, it's not, that's not exactly accurate. The staff inserted language that just threw me for a little loop up here, saying the site plan approval is not valid until the DRI language is approved, which is inconsistent with the understanding that we had walking into this hearing.
Oh, well, that's a whole new story.
Let's just do it the way it was originally proposed, and let them work it out.
That's not, if I might, Ms. Mamano, it's not, that's not exactly accurate. The staff inserted language that just threw me for a little loop up here, saying the site plan approval is not valid until the DRI language is approved, which is inconsistent with the understanding that we had walking into this hearing.
Oh, well, that's a whole new story, you didn't tell me that story. When did this happen?
Just now. And Yvonne stood up and said, this is subject, the site plan approval is subject to the language in the DRI, which is what caused us to have this discussion.
Well, then, let's take that language out.
That's what I'm asking.
Well, that's what, that's what the proposal, because all we're looking at is a site plan level 3. They can figure out the ordinances later, and quite frankly, I, you know, what a shame. Broward Health comes up with this incredible plan for something this community needs so badly, and we're gonna second-guess ourself right out of it. So, if we pass the site plan and leave it to the city attorney's office to work out all the particulars, at least we haven't held it up, we've just passed a site plan.
And then, we can do that by simply striking out this last-minute language that showed up. Well, that wasn't what was given to us originally, so let's just approve it, which the way it was, okay.
I mean, may I, may I jump in for a second? As staff-informed applicant, we had a duty to do so, because you're, you're, you have an item in front of you that's not permitted to be approved, or, I mean, it shouldn't be in front of you, technically, we actually put it in front of you with a condition. Basically, it would be someone coming in asking for a use that's not permitted by the zoning.
I, I appreciate that.
So, please understand that what you're gonna do tonight, we, that's why we had to have that condition in there, is that they can't until the use is permitted through a DRI in this case, by the city commission. So, effectively, that's, that's the situation in front of you. So, removing that condition does not prevent them from moving, or does not prevent them to operate yet. I'm sorry, I said it backwards, it does prevent them from operating, I said that backwards. Because we still can't allow them to get a CO, you know, they can't completely operate until the zoning allows for it, in this case, the DRI allows for it.
Okay, so we don't need the language, 'cause you still can't do it. So, I say we take the language out, leave the flexibility to you to work this out, and we just do what we do, which is a site plan level 3.
Mr. Chair, who asked the question? Shari, I think I'm understanding you saying that, that, that is problematic, because then it doesn't, it violates the stat- the ordinance, rather. There's an ordinance, and taking that language out means that we have passed something that is in violation of the ordinance. What if we made reference to this arrangement? We passed it as is appropriate, and we made reference to the arrangement that Ms. Toothaker is talking about, so that it is at least on the record. Would that be helpful in any way?
It would, and I would also state that one of the changes that we're requesting in the DRI is that because the DRI is inconsistent with the state statute that governs DRIs, what we're doing is we're cleaning it up and saying, we no longer have to go to the commission to change these ordinances, because the state statute doesn't require that anymore. So, I would just ask you to remove the language, you can make reference, you can make it a condition that we work with city staff in the interim to ensure, you know, proper compliance, and that, I think, solves everybody's problems.
Right, that's a motion.
So, it's, for, from the legal perspective, it's not about any sort of deals, respectfully. I have to advise you of the law, and I have, you know, other than hearing it, I heard about some sort of deal today, but that doesn't have any effect on the law. At the end of the day, in the DRI itself, which is an ordinance, it's ordinance C8455, and it's been amended several times by the city commission, and the current language in there says that "All proposed deviations from the requirements of this development order shall be presented to the city commission after review and recommendation from the planning and zoning board for review and determination with respect to whether or not any of the proposed deviations constitute a substantial deviation within the meaning of that 1987 statute." So, there's been an analysis in your staff report, they, you know, the recommendation is it hasn't been a substantial deviation, et cetera, but the ordinance is the law of the city of Fort Lauderdale, and I can't recommend that the planning and zoning board violate the law.
And we're not asking you to violate the law, we're just asking you to approve the use, pursue it to the site plan request, and remove the language that makes reference to the D, the DRI. The DRI still has to go to city commission, and we acknowledge that.
And I'm making that motion, I'm making that motion for the third time. I, and, and we can vote it up and down, but this is, to me, the city attorney is not gonna let them move forward with something that violates, violates any ordinance, I'm sure they're gonna check everything out. All we're doing is moving forward with an approval of the site plan level 3, which is what is before us. And, and I know you're adding all this language, I mean, you're talking to the city attorney while we're here. That could've easily happened tomorrow after we passed it, and you could've told them what happened. So, I, I just, to me, we're here for a site plan level 3, let's approve it, and then you all do what you have to do to make sure it's compliant with ordinances.
I don't have that authority unless it's in your, you know, your motion. It's really up to the board at this point, what they would like to do, I can only give you my recommendation. I do know that if this gets approved and with an effective date of today, then if something else happens that is not in accordance with it being effective today, then the applicant has a right to appeal. And then, the question is for the courts will be, what happens? What is the conflict between the ordinance of the city of Fort Lauderdale versus a resolution that is passed in conflict with that ordinance by a board of the city of Fort Lauderdale? The courts may have to decide that. I don't wanna put you all in that position, so that's why I have to give you the law as it stands.
And the courts could have to decide that the statute is not, this DRI isn't in compliance with the statute and cost them the money for the, I don't know, maybe not?
I, I.
I just. It's a shame.
Yeah, may, may I? I appreciate where you're coming from, I really do, I understand the, the legal dilemma that you have. But you have made a suggestion, and the suggestion is we approve item number 3. With what language? With the removal of the language relative to it must be in compliance with the DRI?
Correct.
Can we do that?
Well, let me just read the language for you, 'cause I don't think it was read, which is what's in the resolution, 'cause this is a different item. So, we read some other language before, but this one pertains to the resolution for the site plan, so may I just read it?
Please.
Okay, so, normally, it'll say something like to the effect that it's effective after the 30-day call-up at the end of our resolutions. So, in this case, because of the DRI, it reads as follows. "In accordance with the requirements in ordinance number C8455 as amended and Section 380.067 of the Florida statutes, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon the effective date of an ordinance amending the development order for the spectrum development of regional impact." Ordinance number C8455 as amended, expressly authorizing a senior citizen center use. So, basically, what it says is that.
I see what you're saying, you say, they're tied together by the language.
That's correct.
Can we change that language? And simply say, we're approving this pursuant to the current DRI statutes, which don't require us to do this in the first place?
And what page is that on?
Currently.
No, there's no pages, I'm making a proposal.
No, I'm asking what page is our resolution, I was trying to look it up.
Uh, no, the resolution, it is not in your backup. The resolution is not in your backup. Normally, that's an email that you get from staff.
Did we get that email from staff?
We didn't have it either.
No.
We didn't either. If I'd seen it, obviously, I wouldn't have brought this discussion to the board, we don't have it either.
Is that normal, that we don't get something we're voting on?
No, the resolutions were being drafted.
Yeah, there was a miscommunication, it was supposed to be sent, but there was a miscommunication with my assistant, so that, that should've been sent, but it wasn't.
I have one more question, theoretically. Let's say they were in a big rush, and we tonight had voted on this DRI recommendation to city commission. City commission passes it finally. The following day, Stephanie comes in here and presents us a site plan. We approve the site plan. The DRI has already been approved, so when we do it linearly like that, it's fine. Two separate cases.
Right, but the, the issue.
One's not contingent on the other, one is contingent on the, the law that is in place. The DRI was approved by commission, and site plan was approved after, so normally, that's the way it would work.
No, well, normally, how it works is that they travel together, because these are both approving a use that is not consistent with the cur- with the current DRI or the code. So, that's what the.
That's not true, because we had a DRI in whatever, 1980, that was approved, and none of those buildings were built, and eventually, we filled in the blanks, and they came in with an office building, they came in with another building.
When was that? If it was in the 80s, that was like 5 or something?
You don't build them all at the same time, and there are modifications throughout the process.
No, but the uses are always identified in a DRI. Even back in the 80s, they would say, would, this, the DRI permits the following uses, and some of them got very specific. They, some of them were general, and they say, "Commercial, this much square footage, office, this much."
Right, but a million square feet of office doesn't exist there. What I'm saying is, I could build an office building there tomorrow, 10,000 square feet, there's plenty of square footage in the DRI, and you guys just approve the site plan.
That use is permitted, here, we have a use that's not permitted under the DRI today.
Understood, I'm just trying to make the distinction, that if we use a linear timeline, and we do this part first, which is the DRI, and then we come in and do the second part, one is not contingent on the other necessarily, direct, as directly as we're at, being asked to state it tonight. We're just approving a site plan, and you guys police it to be sure they're in compliance with the DRI.
No, that's, that's what I'm trying to explain, that it's not about policing it. You, if you approve it effective tonight, you are approving a development order that authorizes this use that is in direct conflict with the ordinance. So, it's, there's nothing to police, it's, it's literally just one, one sector of the city approves something in conflict with something, with the ordinance as it stands. So, there's nothing for me to police, I, if you pass it today, it's effective today, and they can go build, which is what they're asking you to do.
Can we make it revocable, would be my next question?
No, you can't, you can't revoke the, the approval for the development order. You can only say it's contingent upon, which is what I'm recommending, the, the DRI.
Well, we could ma-
No.
Make the approval, but it's revocable if city commission doesn't approve it, which I doubt that's gonna happen.
No, the city commission, they, it, the city commission can't revoke it, the city commi- Normally, it would be subject to a call-up, but the issue here is that even, even if it were to go in the call-up process, it still shouldn't be effective until the ordinance is passed, which is two readings.
So, can I just ask you a question on that? You're saying to us that the only way you can see are approving it so that they can get their grant is by adding what language that it's contingent upon?
Oh, I'm not advising on any grant, I don't represent this entity, so I can't speak for them regarding a grant. My analysis is purely Florida law, the ordinance, our law, pertaining to the, you know, what's required by that. I ha- I don't know anything about a grant, I'm not talking about that.
Okay, I'm, I'm not asking you to opine on the grant or the negotiations. Is there anywhere, in your opinion, as our legal liaison, that we could pass this site plan, this item number 3, okay? That would allow them to start using the property for that purpose prior to the approval of the DRI changes?
I cannot advise that.
Okay, that, thank you very, that's, that's your legal opinion. And I think we have to take, from our perspective, the chance, that if we do do it, then they, you know, we did, we did, we did a bad thing, sorry about that.
But that's what we're supposed to do.
We're supposed to use our judgment.
If you read what we're supposed to do, and you know, I have a real problem with getting an applicant here tonight, and suddenly changing the game when they come before us with what law is and is not, and, you know, again, I, to me, this, we, we went through the whole DRI, we agreed to vote on these two things would be separate on both issues. If they weren't supposed to be separate on both issues, why'd we separate them? Why didn't we just, I, I mean, I, this is, I'm making my motion for the fourth time.
Patrick, you want, you want?
I mean, I don't mean to act, 'cause I agree, but what was the portion you said, that the state doesn't even require the city commission to review it?
We're striking all the language that requires that the DRI go through the city commission.
Okay, but that's not an existing state.
It's not, the DRI is today is not consistent, the way it's drafted is not consistent with state statute, so we're asking to make it consistent with state statute.
The DRI currently.
The state statute already exists.
The DRI already exists, Shari's right, the DRI language has to go to city commission, we don't dispute that at all. At all, all we're asking is that we don't tie the site plan approval to the DRI approval, just, just a clean resolution. Again, we didn't have a copy of the resolution, so I didn't see that language. We didn't, we were not provided it, unfortunately, and I apologize for not, not knowing that ahead of time and having to have this discussion here, but we're asking for the site plan approval not subject to the DRI, and we will meet with staff and try to work that out after the fact.
So, the DRI language is in conflict with the state statute?
It's inconsistent with the statute as, as it has been amended.
Can I just clarify, the DRI language states currently that the state statute of 1987 applies, right?
It's correct, it's consistent with that, with the 87 statute, yes.
So, it's not the 2022 statute, it's 1987 that has a bunch of stuff in there.
Exactly.
So, just to clarify.
So, we're carrying under, the DRI language, which points to a 1987 statute, and so, so we have to comport with that law, because that's what we're carrying under, but in fact, that language is no longer current, I might say valid, because the state's, current state statute has different language. So, we're kind of torn between our own, our ordinance, which is now antiquated, and a new state statute.
It's not that it's not valid, when you do a, a development order such as this, you have to abide by the terms in the development order, and in fact, I think the statute says something to the effect of, if there's a conflict between that, the, the language here and the development order, the development order actually governs. So, that's why the request is to change the applicable statute to the current one, because the development order governs when there's a conflict, that's the issue. And we don't have any objection to making it, you know, go under 2022. The issue is, currently, a change to this has not been approved by the city commission, therefore, we are under the law of 1987, until the city commission says so.
We, we agree, we, we concur, we agree with everything Shari said.
Shari, I'm sorry, Mary, did you wanna make a motion?
Gosh, I can't even remember what we're talking about now.
Well, that's why I'm trying to get it out before you forget.
I'm making a very simple motion. I move to adopt the resolution approving a site plan level 3, case number UDP A23006, based on the findings of fact in the staff report. And, and we find the application meets the standards and requirements of the site level plan, site plan level 3 approval.
And just to clarify, you do, you do or you do not want it contingent upon the city commission approval of the amendment to the DRI?
I don't, I, I don't want it, I just want a very simple, we approve the site plan, and let you all work everything else out.
And the effective date, you want it how we usually do it, which is subject to a call-up, or you would like the effective date? Just to clarify for the record, I wanted to make sure. You want it effective as soon as the 30-day call-up is up?
I think, I think that that's typically what happens, I mean, the commission has a right to call something up. We never make that part of the motion. I don't wanna make it part of the motion tonight, but it's what they have the right to do.
That's, that's what would benefit the applicant.
We're, we're, we're fine with subject to call-up, that would be consistent.
I mean, I'll do it, but we don't usually include that, but I'll put it in there.
Well, somebody's gotta do it for the first time, so let me be there.
Yeah, I know, but this is like ridiculous.
I was only asking because the language that we have currently is the effective date is the date that the ordinance is adopted, so I just wanted to make sure that that's what, you, you wanted that changed, that's all.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second, I'm afraid to say this, any further discussion?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So, are you satisfied that we are doing, that by passing this motion, we are not putting your grant in jeopardy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And are you gonna put a bike?
All right. Leslie, if you'll call the roll, please.
Sir, and just a reminder, this is under case UDP A23006.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure, did we open it up to the public? I don't remember, okay, thanks.
Long time ago, it was like yesterday.
Let me just clarify, he opened the public to both cases under case number 2.
I opened them up separately. I opened them up separately and closed them separately.
Okay, roll, roll, let's go.
I agree.
Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Fertig?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamano?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Moving on to case number 4, UDP Z23004. Steve, we'll start with you with disclosures, please.
I spoke with applicant's attorney, that's it.
Marilyn?
Spoke with the applicant's attorney.
Patrick?
Spoke with counsel for the applicant.
John?
Spoke with applicant's attorney.
Shari?
None.
Mary?
I visited the site, and I spoke with Ms. Toothaker.
And no disclosures for me, okay. Well, good evening, Ms. Toothaker.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Board, thank you so much for allowing us to be here. The next two items, I, I have them on the same, on the same PowerPoint, they're very distinct items, there are two different rezonings, but it's the same.
We're gonna hear them individually.
Yes, well, I'm gonna, if it's okay, I'm gonna present together, because they're, they're relatively simple, and, and it's the same, it's the same client, and they're, they're very close, and it's the same neighborhood association, and so, I'm kind of showing them to you all together. So, the fir- So the first one is, this is the address 623, 631, 635, 637, 639, Northwest 9th Avenue Assemblage. It's on Powerline Road, just a little north of, of Sistrunk Boulevard. And this is the view of the area, this is the view looking south on Northwest 9th. And this is a rezoning that is consistent with the underlying land use to the appropriate zoning category, next slide. So here, we're just showing you, obviously, I know you're very familiar with these, I know you've seen a lot of rezonings in this area. This is obviously the Northwest Rack land use, and the property is here on Northwest 9th Avenue. It's .85 acres, and we are asking to change the zoning to be consistent with the underlying land use, next slide. So the rezoning, the rezoning request is Northwest Rack, which of course is the land use, mixed-use west, which is the land, I'm sorry, the zoning that is appropriate for this area, and it's consistent with the pattern of rezonings that have, that have happened here, next slide. So we're just showing you here, this is just sort of a slide that shows all the other rezonings that are happening. As I said, I know you've seen a lot of these, this is a really exciting area of the city, there's a lot happening here, a lot of, a lot of investment and a lot of redevelopment, and so the property is right here, Northwest Rack, and you can see the properties that are to the south of it have already been rezoned, so it's a consistent pattern of, of rezoning. Just for context, this is the Arcadian property, and this is the other site that we are requesting a rezoning from. About a year ago, we, we came in and rezoned the rest of this block, and at the time, my client was working with the owner of this one little lot that's here to try to acquire it, but it wasn't quite ready, so we moved forward on the rest of the property being rezoned, and this is really like a cleanup, they finally got the property under contract, and so this is to, to, to close out the rest of the, of the block and make that consistent. And there's just some other rezonings that we're showing you, some recent rezonings that were done, next slide. So it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, obviously, the rezoning, it's Northwest Rack, we're going to Northwest Rack zoning, Northwest Rack land use, go to Northwest, Northwest Rack zoning. It does not adversely affect the pattern of development, it's consistent with everything that's being done in this area, and it is suitable for the uses permitted in the proposed zoning. In fact, there was a big, you know, push to kind of bring all these properties into a, a consistent zoning. And, and we did, next slide, we did meet with the Neighborhood Association, they indicated they were sending us a letter of support, we did not receive that by the time we got here this afternoon, but it was a very good meeting, there were a lot of people there, and they were very, very happy with, with the rezonings. So we're just showing you here, the existing zoning is RMM 25, and I know you're very familiar with the permitted uses, and of course, the difference is the Northwest Rack is, is a little bit, a little bit broader in its, in its permitted uses and has some conditional uses as well. We don't have a site plan. I did tell the Neighborhood Association that when we, when we have a site plan, we have, they have engaged an architect and they're starting to, to talk about site plans, but obviously, we'll bring that back to the Neighborhood Association, it's very important for them to be a part of that. Next slide. And this is the Northwest Rack MWU, so there's an east property and a west property. And so these are just some differences in the, in the, in the table of how setbacks and whatnot are applied, next slide. So this is just a timeline, we did have, as I said, we did have that, that meeting earlier this week, and, and obviously, this is a rezoning, so it has to go all the way to City Commission for two readings, so both of these will go, next slide. And I think that's the end. And I'm happy to answer any questions on both of them.
So, again, before we start asking questions, do you want to read in corrections? I understand, is there some staff corrections involved with this one as well?
Hi, good evening, Chair, members of the board, Carleen Devonish with Urban Design and Planning. Just one small typo. On page one, under general location, I typed in 637 as one of the parcel addresses, it's actually 627, not 637, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, real quick, I'm sorry, can you please tell me, is that in one of the exhibits?
No, it's on page one of the staff report.
Okay.
The 123, fourth line at the top, for general location.
Yes.
It's 627, not 637. That was a typo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant's counsel? Hearing, seeing none, we'll open the item up to the public. Is there anybody from the public that would wish to speak on this? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public participation, bring it back to the board for additional conversation or a motion?
I, I understand, I'm the newbie here, so I wasn't here when you did all the rezonings and the, and the discussions of the, the area-wide zoning plan. I just noted that when you go from the residential to the new special zoning, the front yard requirements, the side yard requirements, they're all much less strict. For instance, the front yard requirement goes from 25 feet to zero.
Correct.
So as you're starting to move this new customized zoning deeper and deeper into the residential area, I find that problematic, and I'm not addressing that to you, I'm addressing that to the staff, because as I recall, when we started discussing these mixed-use zones, there was some acknowledgement that there was going to be conflicts between the interface of the residential areas and the, the new, more intense zoning districts, and I never saw any work on that, and this is the proof in the pudding, that, you know, this type of mixed-use zone, while I understand it's the plan and I support the plan and we need to do, you know, more redevelopment, I'm concerned that the, the conflicts between the character, the urban character of the residential neighborhoods with the lush front yards and perhaps landscaping becomes much more hard-faced, and it may not be a problem in this one, you may have a site plan that I, you know, actually has some, you know, greenery and some, some relief on the streetscape, but it's a concern of mine, and it's one that I, I think it's appropriate to bring up, but I support the project.
I understand, I understand.
Anyone else have any comment?
Yeah, I think what Marilyn's saying is really valid. It's just, that whole area is kind of growing wild right now, and Sistrunk, you know, being the main corridor, I see where, you know, those tighter setbacks are good, you know, just try to create those little urban kind of core areas, but at some point, the city has to step in and do a study and create some sort of transition back into the neighborhoods, because at some point, you know, it's gonna get too big. It almost has to taper down and then maybe come back up as you approach sunrise. So I think something should be done, if not by staff, some suggestion, maybe we as a board will, you know, have to make those decisions as things start to progress further. And that would require a lot of study, I think, to know where those edges are at. So I, I agree with you, in this case, you know, I'm also in favor of this project because it's right along the corridor, but I, I could see that being an issue eventually.
Something to keep an eye on.
Mary, I see you have your light on, is that to make a motion or do you have a comment on this item?
Well, I only have my light on because I forget to turn my microphone on.
All right. Anyone else have a comment? Not, does somebody want to make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion, I've got the sheet here. Which one is this I'm making under your cheat sheet?
The rezoning, the recommendation to approve.
Oh, here I found it, I might, I found it. Motion to recommend approval of case number UDP Z23004, based on the following findings of fact from the staff report, and the board finds that the application meets all applicable criteria, and that's my motion.
Do we need to make note of the correction that staff?
Yes, you're adopting the correction in the staff report.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Great, thanks.
Second. All right. Any additional discussion? Leslie, please call the roll. Yes.
Ms. Svertic?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamanu?
Yes.
And Chair Weymouth?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Next case, number UDP Z23003. Stephanie, I believe you said this is pretty much the same presentation, correct?
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Okay, so before you get into questions and answers, let's have disclosures. Mr. Gannon?
Spoke with applicant's attorney, and about a year ago, I did a site visit because of some adjacent units were on a case that we were reviewing.
Okay, Marilyn?
Spoke to the attorney and drove by.
Patrick?
Spoke to counsel for the applicant.
John?
Spoke to applicant's counsel.
Shari?
None.
Mary?
I visited the site and I spoke with Ms. Toothaker.
And I have none as well. So being that we've heard this, are there any questions of the applicant's counsel before we open up to the public for comment? Seeing none, we'll open up this item to the public for comment. Is there anybody in the public that wishes to comment on this item? Hearing and seeing none, we'll close the public portion of it, bring it back to the board. Does anybody wish to have further comment or make a motion?
Motion to recommend approval of UDP Z23003, based on the findings of fact in the City Staff Report and the Board, and the Board hereby finds the application meets the applicable criteria.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have the second, any further discussion? Leslie, if you'd call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Svertic?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamanu?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously, congratulations.
Thank you very much, Board, thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number six, case number UDP T23001. Ms. Rettig, the microphone is yours.
This code amendment today before you is UDP T23001. It's a code cleanup that we think will help the neighbors and also staff. There's several inconsistencies between the cluster code table within the dimensional requirements, as shown in the backup, that we're trying to clarify and make it easier for the public to know what the setbacks are. They would be referred to the table, then the table refers them to the cluster code, and then the cluster code refers them back to the table. So we're trying to make it easier to follow. And also to add some language, that we don't list the minimum requirements between buildings of clusters, we're adding that to the table, and we're also adding some language to the code for clusters under 47-18.9, to note that clusters are approved by this board, as you've seen them before in the past, in the cluster code table, the cluster code of the ULDR, it doesn't say how they're approved, but if you go to the development table, it says by the Planning and Zoning Board. So we want to make that clear, that clusters have to come to this board. And we also would like to add the word unobstructed to all the easement languages. People are trying to place planters, trees, gates in these easements that are supposed to be five-foot, unobstructed, so we're adding the word unobstructed in there. And then we're adding the language where the refuse containers can be located on the site. So those are the first code amendments that are listed under item number six.
Any questions for Ms. Rettig?
Can I just ask one quick question?
You sure can.
Okay, on this number six, these are things you've already done and you're cleaning up the table?
So there, the, the table, as it's shown, the changes haven't been made. So I've struck through what's existing that we want to remove, and I've underlined what we want to refer to.
Okay, so on page three of 14, it says 25 percent, I'm sorry, it struck out, it's the fourth bullet point, and it's 25 percent.
So we're just, we're just making it consistent, we're saying, see the single-family dwelling unit code, so if you just look, they're all consistent, it'll be the same as single-family, which is the 25 percent.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing, hearing none, we close it, bring it back to the board, any further discussion? Somebody want to make a motion? Motion, Mary?
Well, I have to ask, she has to tell me which one I'm making this on.
It's case number six, UDP T2300.
Yeah, no, no, I recommend to move approval of case number UDP T2, no, yeah, 23001.
Yes, it's at the bottom of your page, two of the...
Yes, I recommend to, yes, and, and the Board finds that the text amendments of the ULDR are consistent with the comprehensive plan. Hold on, next page, nope, that's it.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Leslie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Svertic?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamanu?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes. Item passes unanimously. Number seven, case number UDP T23004. Good evening, Ms. Rettig.
Good evening. This text amendment, UDP T23004, is similar to the cluster code language, we'd like to add the word unobstructed to the easement areas and to specify where the waste containers can be placed when you're building a townhouse development. So those are the two changes with this code amendment.
Okay. Assuming there were no questions on the last item, there's no questions on this one, anybody have a question? I'll open it up to public hearing, anybody wish to be heard on this? Seeing, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for a motion. Mary?
Motion, I recommend, I move to recommend approval of case number UDP T23004, and the Board hereby finds that the text amendments to the ULDR are consistent with the comprehensive plan.
We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Leslie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Svertic?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamanu?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. I have a number eight, case number UDP T23005. Good evening, Ms. Rettig.
Good evening. With this text amendment, UDP 23005, we are trying to clean up the parking table. It's a little messy, there's different housing types listed in different sections, so you may not find the exact housing type, you're looking to see what parking you're required. So we've grouped them together as appropriately and listed in an alphabetical order under the residential grouping, so you can clearly find it, and it's not stuck in some other, like duplexes here and townhouses there, they're all together. And we'd also like to change in 47-20.5, we just added the same titles that are in the specific use section in the parking section, so you can clearly see that we're talking about clusters or townhomes, and they have the same name.
Wonderful.
Any questions for Ms. Rettig? We'll open up this item to the public for comment, anybody wish to make a comment? Seeing and hearing none, we close the public portion, bring it back to the board, somebody want to make a motion?
I don't have my script.
Okay, I move to recommend approval. I'll let you, all right.
Your Honor?
A motion to recommend...
To recommend approval, case number UDP T23005.
Case number UDP T23005. The board hereby finds that the text amendments to the ULDR are consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Perfect.
A motion? A second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McTeague. Any further discussion? Leslie, call the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. Baranco?
Yes.
Ms. Spurtic?
Yes.
Mr. McTeague?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. Mamanu?
Yes.
Chair Weymouth?
Yes.
Item passes unanimously. Congratulations. Any communication to the city commission? Hearing none. Next item, for the good of the city of Fort Lauderdale, anybody have any comments?
I just have one request for staff.
Fire away.
Leslie? In future votes, and I always forget to ask you this, but could you rotate first to go? I like to say no once in a while.
You can start off with no.
And if you leave me for last, I can say no.
You can't be last.
I don't want to start off with no because that'll freak everybody out. But just rotate it once in a while, it's nicer that way.
Next year, we'll do that, John.
I have a quick question and it has to do with the votes, the way we vote. At our last meeting, we had an item, which was, a motion was made and the motion failed. It was a motion to approve and the motion failed, okay? And then, automatically, the motion was denied without having somebody make a motion to deny it and a vote taken. Now, I was concerned about that and I asked for guidance from the attorney. And apparently, this is our practice. It's not actually written anywhere, but it's our practice. I actually even went back to the 2018 city commission conference meeting where this was discussed. Now, you probably all know this and this was the first time I experienced it. And that's okay, if that's the way we traditionally done it, that's the way we've traditionally done it. But I would really want us to consider asking the city attorney to codify that so that we understand and the public is clear that once a motion is either approved or denied, it doesn't automatically become the opposite without a vote to do the opposite.
So, sometimes we have done that?
Yeah, and sometimes we haven't.
And sometimes we don't. But I just want to say, she has given us a great script, which we're making sure you get.
Oh, yeah, the script...
And I want you to know, she put both emotions to approve and emotions to deny on here. So, at times, we read both things.
Yeah, but we don't always read both things. And we didn't last month. And so, I'm wondering if that could be resolved with some kind of, I don't know, maybe an ordinance or a rule or something that would clarify that if a motion fails or a motion passes, no, if a motion fails, that in order for that motion to pass, we actually have to take an affirmative action. And it just doesn't default to the opposite. And I understand from the attorney that we've talked about this. And I'm just bringing it up again because in my experience as a director of zoning, I don't think that's good practice.
And you know what? Let me ask you a question about that. I thought if we denied something, we had to put all these reasons on the record. So, how...
Yes, so, I don't want to speak for anyone because it's a pretty long conference meeting, but in 2018, when I first got here, there was some sort of dispute that I observed with a board member. I forget whether it was this board or another board, but the point was that the board member insisted that if the motion to deny, the motion to approve failed, that it was a denial and that there was no reason to do another vote. And the issue was that under Robert's rules, when you, when there's a tie, it fails, right? And so, at that particular night, they just kept voting and voting and voting and it kept tying and tying and tying. And so, there became a dispute between someone from my office and that board member. And then, the discussion was, hey, do we even really need to do this exercise? It's automatically denied. So, then, there was a request sent to the city commission to clarify, hey, is it a denial? And they, you know, Marilyn watched it, but there was a long discussion about it. And the conclusion was that, what I heard was that it is a denial. And then, I recall, you know, the recommendation from my office just being that, okay, if it's an automatic denial, then we'll, we just need to put that in the rules somewhere because we have not officially adopted any rules at the city. So, there, we haven't adopted Robert's rules or any rules, to my knowledge. So, that was another issue that we had recommended, but there was no resolution or ordinance passed after that, to my knowledge. So, if you all would like to go in that direction, whatever way you want to go, I'm fine with drafting whatever it is that, you know, but you would have to send a communication to the commission, of course, and get their approval. But I do recommend that we have, you know, some sort of rules in order as well as, you know, a standing up how this applies. Because I know in the past, you know, John, you had wanted to make motions that were different and you didn't like it. And we have a different board now, so if the board wants to make enough, you know, a motion to deny and stating the reasons, I think that is the best way to do it, in my opinion.
I mean, I think that that's just good, good practice and we should send a communication to the commission to ask the attorney to propose. What would it be, an ordinance or a...
So, I think with the rules, I think it's best to pass it by a resolution, just because that's how a lot of the board stuff are done, your terms, you know, your terms are in the code, but, you know, a lot of the board things are done by resolution. So, I, you know, I do have a resolution already drafted, but I would have to change it depending on which way you go with the, with the motion, so...
Well, then, I would suggest that, we suggest that we send a communication to the commission requesting that they pass a resolution clarifying the procedures that are appropriate for what happens when there is a tie vote to either approve or deny, then the opposite has to be actually motioned and voted on to approve or deny. And if you can't bring yourself to think about it right now because it just brought it up again, maybe go home and think about this again and we'll talk about it again. Because, you know, I don't, I hate to ask people to make a decision, you know, boom.
What I, what I would, what I would prefer is if she's already got something drafted, to circulate it for us to read it, see if we can get behind it before she sends it to the city commission. And then, we go, well, that wasn't what we were planning on as a board.
Excellent suggestion. Why, yes.
So, if maybe with the next month's agenda, we can circulate that, say, this is the draft, chew on it.
What I have currently drafted is what was expressed, what I heard in the commission meeting, was that it automatically results in a denial. But if you'd like the affirmative motion, I can change it and just state that, you know, in accordance with the, you know, the changes to 166.033, which require you to state the reason for your denial, it's more appropriate now to actually do a motion to deny from a legal standpoint.
I don't have a problem with what we're doing now, but if there's a better way to build a mousetrap, I'll certainly look at it. I know you were asking for reasons to deny, you know, we don't have to. If it changes that we have to, well...
Thank you, Chair. I think that's an excellent suggestion.
Yeah, I think that affirmative denial means...
I've got another excellent suggestion. Let's adjourn.
Can I just say one thing?
Of course.
I, I just, I know a lot of times, it seems like we question a lot of what you're talking about. And I really had planned not to talk tonight because I have a little aortic炎.
You're doing a great job.
But I just want you all to know how much we appreciate you, even when we're asking lots of questions and, and we're just glad we have you and I hope the city commission appreciates you.
Thank you. We don't take it personal, we like being here. Thank you.
I'm walking out the door, I want to get out of here. Same.
Same.
I'm married to an attorney, so this is my only chance to attack attorneys, okay?
Thank you, nothing personal, I appreciate you all, thank you.
But as far as the motions go, I had a case before this board, I won't mention the case, but I'll tell you who was the chair, Patrick.
Don't tell us.
And he was the last vote and denied the approval on his vote. And luckily, I was able to ask for reconsideration because it was only one thing that we had to agree to. And the client agreed to do that one thing. And when I added that one thing to the motion, then it passed. So, in those cases, I'm very sensitive to that because at one point, this guy denied it.
Thought you forgot all about it.
He was chair. I'll never forget that.
Did it work out? You got it resolved, right?
That's it, I had to share that.
Patrick, you were a great chair.
Can we say goodnight now?
We can certainly say goodnight.
He got it fixed, didn't he?
Say we're all goodnight.
If I didn't deny it, I would have gone through all that night's little...